Good evening, and I welcome you to the 2020 Virtual Dare County Board of Commissioners Candidate Forum, sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Dare County in partnership with the North Carolina Coastal Federation. The Federation has contributed greatly to our technical expertise and skill, and we thank them for that. My name is Lorelei Di Bernardo, and I'm the coordinator for this forum. I really like to thank the candidates as well as everyone in our audience for participating in this virtual event. The League of Women Voters is celebrating its 100th anniversary in 2020. We were founded by the leaders of the women's suffrage movement, and we are proud to be continuing their tradition of bringing voters and candidates together in this way. We're also proud to continue the fight today for equality for all Americans. We will be recording tonight's meeting so that more Dare County voters can see and hear their candidates before they vote. And this is something I have to say here: if anyone in our audience tonight experiences any technical difficulties, we apologize. However, we will not be able to troubleshoot due to the high number of attendees and the variability of devices that are being used. But remember, you will be able to view this program in its entirety on either our YouTube page or it'll also be broadcast on current TV in the next couple of weeks. I will now introduce our moderator for this evening, Colleen Almany.
Thank you, Lorelei. Good evening. My name is Colleen Almany, and I am a member of the League of Women Voters of Dare County, and I live in Kill Devil Hills. The League is a nonprofit, nonpartisan political organization. It encourages informed and active participation in all levels of government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League maintains a strict, nonpartisan policy. It neither endorses nor opposes any political party or candidate. The League participates in the positive campaign project and has asked each candidate to take the Code of Campaign Ethics pledge. Participating in our webinar this evening are our technical team comprised of League member Craig Merrill and Michael Flynn with the North Carolina Coastal Federation, and Nancy Beer and Deli, who reviewed the questions we received from attendees and voters in Dare County during the registration process. Questions were reviewed for clarity, relevance, and to avoid duplication. So let's go ahead and get started. There are four commissioner seats up for election and six candidates vying for those seats. All candidates are present tonight. The candidates for District 2 race are incumbent Bob Woodard of Kill Devil Hills and challenger Amanda Hooper Walters of Kill Devil Hills. Candidates for the District 3 race are incumbent Steve House of Kitty Hawk and challenger Kathy McCullagh Testa of Southern Shores. Wally Overman of District 1 is running unopposed for reelection to the Dare County Board of Commissioners. Dani Couch of District 4 is also running unopposed. Let's review the format for this evening's virtual forum. All candidates will have two minutes for an opening statement. Lorelei, our timekeeper, will signal when the candidate has 30 seconds remaining. She will display the stop sign if the candidate continues past the allotted time. Opposed candidates will participate in the question and answer segment, answering questions that voters submitted during the forum registration process. These questions may be addressed to one candidate or all opposed candidates. Unopposed candidates will sit out the Q&amp;A segment unless they feel strongly that a response is needed. Two minutes are allotted for responses. Opportunities will not be extended to those who pass on a question. And finally, each candidate is entitled to a one-minute closing statement. Before we started tonight, I drew names to create a random order for opening statements. We will reverse that order for closing statements. So let's get started with our opening statements. First, we'll hear from Ms. McCullagh Testa.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters of Dare County. Lorelei and Colleen, thank you so much, as well as the North Carolina Coastal Federation and Michael Flynn, thank you too, as well, for organizing and sponsoring tonight's Dare County Board of Commissioners forum. It would have been so great to be able to see everyone. I think we see about 70 people so far online. It would have been so great to see everyone in person. But it is also, you know, to spend some time talking with everyone one-on-one in a room. But, you know, with COVID and with what we're facing right now, I know we're unable to do that, which makes this campaign season just a little different for all of us. But I'm so glad to be able to have this opportunity tonight online to tell you a little bit more about myself and why I should be your next Dare County Commissioner. My campaign is focusing on our economy, our environment, and educational opportunities for all. We all know it has definitely been a difficult year for us here in Dare County, and we have so many challenges ahead of us. And I'm the candidate that will meet those challenges head-on. I have a strong history of building partnerships and coalitions to strengthen and support our community. My town and county-wide elected experience, which I'll talk about later in the forum, I hope, along with my professional career in managing large-scale projects, budgets, and communications programs, as Bob would know, because I contacted him a little bit earlier, you know, when we were going through in March, getting the Joint Information Committee together, basically make me the best candidate to serve as your next Dare County Commissioner. I am running to bring a more diverse, inclusive, and compassionate voice to our Dare County Commission. I'm looking forward to sharing my thoughts and my background with you throughout this evening. And I want to thank everyone so much for the opportunity, and I want to thank everyone so much for being online and joining us and listening to what we all have to say tonight.
Thank you, Kathy. Next, we'll hear from Mr. Overman.
For the past seven years, it has been my own privilege to serve the people of Dare County as county commissioner from District 1. For the past four years, and under the leadership of Chairman Bob Woodard, it has been my pleasure to serve on what I believe is one of, if not the most, exciting and proactive boards in the history of Dare County. We have watched our economically critical tourism industry grow in excess of $1 billion per year, and we have supported that growth with beach nourishment projects and maintenance that will encourage even further growth of that traditional industry and the newer ecotourism industry in the coming years. Distributions to the county and municipalities from the occupancy tax associated with tourism helps to significantly reduce the tax burden on our residents for the services offered throughout the county. We are actively pursuing the essential housing issue in Dare County through our collaboration with the Development Finance Initiative of the UNC School of Government to identify potential properties for development, select a qualified builder, and confirm the best funding options for hopefully multiple projects. We are now in the process of building a dredge that will help keep inlets open and provide access to the oceans for our commercial, charter, and recreational fishermen. We have just begun the demolition portion of our project to completely redesign and build the new Manio campus of the College of the Albemarle, as well as fund a guaranteed scholarship program for any Dare County student wishing to attend. We continue our close relationship with the Dare County School System through our 5-on-5 meetings, and we continue to fund the DCS system at among the highest per pupil levels in the state. We have been and will continue to be wholly committed to quality health care and appropriate social services for the citizens of Dare County. I look forward to the opportunities and challenges that lie ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Overman. Next is Ms. Hooper Walters.
Hi, everyone. I'm Amanda Hooper. I'm thankful for the League's adaptability during these times. Forums like this are the best way to meet candidates and understand the similarities and differences amongst us. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and North Carolina Coastal Federation for making tonight possible. This is my first election ever. I think I am the only candidate here tonight who has yet to serve in any elected position. When I decided to run for county commissioner, I, along with many of my peers, were ready for some things to change, but meeting on Zoom isn't really what I had in mind. Adaptability is critical, though. We really don't know what tomorrow will bring. These are different times, and we are going to have to approach our challenges with our eyes set on both the here and now and on the future. For decades, the Outer Banks has grown exponentially. In a way, I've grown up alongside the county, but we're a long way from riding around Lake Drive in the bucket of a Batco. It's been about 36 years since we experienced our first major boom, and we haven't truly experienced a bust since. Growth brings us opportunities and challenges. Growth brings change. But I love what Dare County has become, but there are things I miss about the Dare County of years gone by. I'd like to think of myself as a bridge between the past and the future, between wisdom and innovation. Right now, we have to think about sustainable growth and the infrastructure to support it. We have to think about our ability to care for our residents and all those who visit our base year after year. We have to think about the county we are and the county we want to be in 10 years and in 20 years. Balance, adaptability, and innovation are key features I will bring to the table, not to mention diversity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Mr. Couch.
Hello, Colleen, and thank you to the League for all you do for civic awareness. I'm Dani Couch. Hello, everyone. Good to see we're up over 80 participants. That's fantastic. I'm a lifelong resident of Hatters Island. I reside in Buxton, here on the Cape. My wife, Sherri, is the retired school principal here at Hatters. And I've got a house full of kids. I've got a 13-year-old and a 15-year-old boy, so I'm going to speak quickly in case they come in here and want me to go shoot ball anymore, which I'm happy to do because I always school every one of them. Y'all, I'm not going to take a lot of time because this is a critical election. We have some very qualified candidates. But I have spent the better part of the past 25 years in public service. I know that we have many hard, critical decisions to make. If you remember what went on here when they were predicting anywhere from 5% to 8% of our population being impacted by COVID-19 back in January and February. Folks, that was a bell ringer. That was quite an alarm. And I know it was not a popular decision for a lot of our visitors and not a lot of popularity with our non-resident property owners, who are a critical part of our economy, but it was important for us. It stood in the gap for us so that we could ensure, until we got a grip on exactly what was going, or at least a grip on what was going to be for the best interest of the health and well-being of our community, until we were able to figure that out, I was not afraid to make the decisions that were necessary. I am on the control group. At the time, I was not a voting member, but I am now. And I'm thankful that I am because what I can bring to the table is the fact that I'm a 10th-generation North Carolinian, and I have contacts stretching not just in our four-county area, but across the state. I will encourage our listeners to appreciate the fact that this board is a high-performing board, and I'm not afraid to, if there are newcomers, I'm not afraid to embrace those who come new onto the board because I've been in sales all my life. I can work with anyone. That's one of the neat things about politics, and the neat thing about public service is that there's no such thing as a normal day.
Danny, I'm sorry, you're out of time. If you just want to wrap it up quickly?
Thank you all. Thank you, Colleen.
But that was really quickly. Okay, thank you. Okay, next up, we'll hear from Mr. House.
First off, I want to thank the League and also Coastal Federation for putting this thing on. I know it's a difficult time for all of us, and a lot of us are learning new things, especially when it comes to computers. I just want to thank you all because I know it's a challenge in itself to do a forum like this instead of in person. I have been a long and strong advocate to protect our watermen and a way of life on the Outer Banks, along with helping to make monumental advancements in keeping our waterways open. I've been active in Dare County, serving for over 30 years in emergency services. I care about our county and the people in every aspect. I not only serve on the Board of Commissioners, but also serve on the Oregon Inlet Task Force, along with the subcommittee on that task force for the new dredge project, which I am glad to say is under construction. I have reinstated Dare County Commission for Working Watermen and was appointed by the Board of Commissioners as chairman of that group. I'm also a member of the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, who are working towards steering our youth out of trouble and away from the life of crime. I know the value of being part of and connected with the average working class. As a small business owner, I know the hardships we all face in being in a resort community. That's why I'm running for reelection. Our watermen need representation to fight the injustices and regulations placed upon them. I already have the partnerships in place, not only here in Dare County, but also at the state level and also on the federal level. And I have worked my tail off to make sure that we get everything straightened out that we can to make sure that our working watermen have a way of life and can continue to pass that tradition on to their grandchildren. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. And last but not least, we'll hear from Mr. Bob Woodard.
Thank you, Colleen, and certainly thank the League and the Coastal Federation for sponsoring this. And those of you who are listening in this evening, thank you so much for joining in. You know, I've had the honor of serving the people of Dare County for almost eight years now as commissioner from District 2. You know, preserving and enhancing the quality of life of Dare County residents is my mission and the reason why I seek reelection. The needs of our community are diverse, and I want to make this promise to continue to address the many components and contributions to the quality of life that we enjoy here at Dare County. Once again, this requires thoughtful, careful attention, especially in the wake of this coronavirus that will impact us as it has already done and in the coming months and years. Preserving and enhancing our quality of life includes safeguarding our tourism economy. That is critical. That is our driving force in Dare County. Providing affordable opportunities to expand workforce housing, exploring ways to diversify our economy and protecting our unique, pristine environment provides the comprehensive network of services that make Dare County the best place for you to live, for you to work, and for you to raise your family. To accomplish these goals, we need to continue to focus our attention on critical infrastructure components that support the economy and our quality of life. And this includes maintaining beach nourishment. This is critical. We spent over $100 million in the last eight years on beach nourishment, which enables us to attract visitors from around the world and support our watermen by giving them the tools that they need to put healthy seafood on American tables. We must guard against government overregulation and our fishing industry and continue to move forward to launch our very own dredge vessel, which Vice Chairman Overman mentioned just a moment ago. This is critical to keep our inlets open. Additionally, we need to continue to provide the many things that county government does to enhance the quality of life, and these include our schools, our EMS, our public safety, offering wide variety of recreational opportunities, and certainly preserving our public health and addressing the social services needs of our community and providing our trash and transportation and our libraries and many other services that our citizens depend upon. So Dare County Board of Commissioners has made a great stride in tackling the key issues that contribute to the quality of life that we enjoy here in Dare County. We must move forward and continue to build on that foundation that this board has so diligently done for our children and for our grandchildren.
Thank you, Bob. We're going to go ahead and jump into our first questions. If I could remind all of the candidates who'll be responding, just try to take a look up and check with Lorelei every now and then just to make sure you're staying on task with your time. Our first question comes from the League itself, and this goes out again to all opposed candidates. What is your vision for the future of Dare County? And we'll start with Mr. Woodard.
You know, that's a great question. The most important issues and visions that I certainly have for Dare County is preserving and enhancing the quality of life of Dare County residents. You know, it's my mission and the reason why certainly I seek reelection. It's important that we seek the needs of the community in a diverse way and continue to address the many components that contribute to the quality of life that we so enjoy in Dare County. This requires, as I said earlier, a thoughtful, careful attention, especially in the wake of what we're going through now with the coronavirus. We need to accomplish these goals to continually focus on the attention of critical infrastructure components. Beach nourishment, I said that earlier, is very, very critical. That's our driving force here in Dare County. We've spent, as I mentioned in my opening comments, over $100 million in the last eight, nine years to protect our driving force in Dare County. Our schools, we have a great relationship with our Board of Education. We have a 5-on-5 that we establish between the Dare County Board of Education and the Dare County Board of Commissioners that we meet on a regular basis to address our school needs. Our board has stepped up to the plate and spent $23 million to support our schools and our county. In addition to that, we have spent, now will be in the area of about $17.6 million to expand our COA campus in Dare County in Manio. If you've been in Manio recently, you've seen the fences go up. We're getting ready to demolish the old middle school and high school there so that we can make way for a new campus for Dare County and our kids. Our board, again, a bipartisan board, has stepped up to the plate and put out $250,000 for every single graduating high school student in Dare County to have an opportunity to go to COA and get a associate.
Your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that. We'll now be going to Mr. House. What is your vision for the future of Dare County?
I think the future of Dare County is very bright. As Chairman Woodard has mentioned, our beach nourishment program has worked out very well to increase tourism. It increases not only the tourism part of the beach, but also increases nesting areas for sea turtles and things of that nature as well, and also weather migratory bird. Our watermen, again, like I said, I've been fighting hard for them. I have, at the drop of a hat, left Dare County to go to Raleigh or wherever, Wilmington, wherever they were having a meeting, that something was brought up at the last minute. I've willingly done that. Do have several partnerships available throughout the region of our fishing industries, not only, just like I said, not only here in Dare, but also across the state. Our waterways, they're very important, especially not only for our watermen, but also as a safeguard for vessels going up and down the East Coast. We have to keep our inlets open. Right now, Hatters Inlet and Oregon Inlet are temperamental at best to keeping them open. I fought hard, along with several of the rest of our Board of Commissioners and also with a lot of our representatives in Raleigh, to get $15 million allocated to build this dredge. And we've done that. We got it allocated. It was in the budget, actually got vetoed by the governor and actually got overridden in the House, so we were able to have that dredge ready to go. It's still going to take about 20 months for it to be here in the water, but we're moving forward with it, and I would love to see that come to fruition and see it out here at Oregon Inlet and Hatters Inlet and cleaning those inlets out and making us so that we are open for business. And we now have a hard push, a new resurgence, in possibly getting jetties at Oregon Inlet, and we're working hard on that as well. So I can see bright futures in Dare County, and I'm dead set on working hard to see those issues come to fruition. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Next up, let's hear about the vision from Ms. McCullagh Testa.
Well, when we talk about vision, I think of something a little bigger and a little more further-reaching than, you know, what I've heard so far. I'm thinking of, you know, kind of what Amanda said. We need to be bold. We need to be creative. We need to be adaptable. We need to be inclusive. We do have, I've done some polls and some surveys recently of our residents, and of course, our top issue is the environment, and that means clean water. Yes, we need to have clean water. We need to address stormwater runoff. We need to do all of that. Without our environment, we do not have our economy. Yes, our tourism economy is the lifeblood. It's what we've relied upon for decades. But it doesn't work for everybody who lives here. Those of us who live and work here are having a very hard time affording to live and work here. Amanda can attest to that. I can attest to that. We need to look at a diversification of our economy. We need to look at a bigger picture, get put together a long-term strategic plan. We need to, one of the things that I'm proposing, and I think that the NC State study proposed this as well, is we need an Office of Economic Development, which will help us lead and diversify that, not only within the county, working with our municipalities, but within this region. Carrington County has one. Dare County can have one as well in the counties around us. So there are a number of things that I see as we're looking forward that we need to be more visionary and more bold. But first and foremost, we need to focus on those of us who live and work here so that we're able to live and work here and support this economy and the Outer Banks that we all know and love.
I'm sorry, Amanda. You're up. What's your vision for the county?
So my vision for the county in the future is actually a little bit smaller. I would like to see small business and Main Street development. It would receive much more attention for me. But to be able to do that, it comes from planning for the future. We are facing a time of almost urban planning with our population growth, and it's going to take strategy to be able to have a small-town feel and hold the number of people that we are trying to hold. I'd like to see the vibrant small business scene with easy accessibility to these different businesses, which means public transportation. It means the ability to move people around the county without having so, so many cars on the road. I'd like to see producers showcased, and that really is our commercial fishermen. I'd like to see open-air markets. This is something that this particular board has opposed in the past. To hark back to what Steve was talking about, I have spent countless hours and years traveling around the state fighting for commercial fishermen, and we in Dare County are the single, only county that does not allow open-air markets for their commercial fishermen. So that's definitely one of the big ones. While sanitation and DOT are definitely within the scope of things we need to discuss, I think we really do need to focus on the people, and that's small business development and growth from the bottom up.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Our next question, we actually got several times, but this particular one came from Andrea O'Donnell. Her question is specifically, how will you address affordable year-round housing? And we will start with Mr. House.
Affordable year-round housing has always been a big issue with Dare County. It has been ever since I've been here. We have teamed up with the UNC School of Government. We're working on that program very rapidly and seeking out other developments, too. Also, the Chamber of Commerce actually came with us at one time with a proposal. So like I said, it's not just us. The whole county is working on this situation. But there's a lot of different things that have to go into effect to get affordable housing in Dare County. A lot of grant programs and a lot of tax credits and stuff like that can lead to the development for affordable housing. Unfortunately, there's a lot of guidelines involved with those. You just can't build it and put it here. You've got to actually meet a whole string of different guidelines just to even implement the idea. But we're working on that. With the UNC School of Government, they've actually come up with a few ideas. As a matter of fact, we're going to have a meeting with them in a not-too-distant future with some of the things that they've come up with. And so it's one of those things, you just can't, it's hard to have... you just can't, it's hard to have year-round housing in a resort community. We're not the only ones that have been affected by this. I've reached out to other communities, all up and down the East Coast, and also out in our, in like Asheville and in the mountain areas where they have the same situation, not summertime seasonal, but wintertime seasonal, and they have the same situations too. So we're looking at it from not just a standpoint of looking at, yes, this is a problem, how do we fix it? We're looking at what avenues we can get it so that it actually comes to fruition, instead of just talking about it. We have, we already have plans in action, and we're going to make it happen.
Thank you very much. Mr. Woodard, what are your thoughts about how you'll address affordable year-round housing?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Colleen. We are addressing it. We, we are the leaders in the county, the county has taken the lead. I have met with the mayors, I meet with the mayors monthly concerning this and other issues throughout Dare County, and we have taken the lead in doing this. As Commissioner House has just mentioned to you, we have partnered with the UN School of Government Development Finance Initiative. We've spent about $85,000 with those folks doing some research and finding property for us that we will provide, and I don't like to use the word affordable, so that's the last time I'll use it this evening, it's essential housing. We have worked on essential housing with, as Commissioner House has said, with the Chamber, they've brought us initiatives, we've looked at those. We have a piece of property in Manio that we are going to do something with, hopefully very, very soon, Bowser Town. We own that property, and we have some options there. We've also reached out to the State Employees Credit Union, they have substantial funds that they will help with essential housing. They've done a project on Hatteras Island, and they've done one on the Northern beaches. We've went to them, I've met with them recently to discuss that, we're waiting for some response back from them. Unfortunately, we feel like that they have quite a bit of money to offer interest-free loans to build those types of facilities, but they're working through the entire state. We have some other options in different, other parcels and throughout Dare County that is in non-incorporated Dare, but we are, I am constantly encouraging our community, municipality mayors to do the same thing, and we're hoping that they'll be able to do that. But we will be doing something in Dare, and hopefully very, very soon, as Commissioner House again said, we should have a report from them in the next couple of weeks with respects to what we can do
Thank you.
in Bowser Town.
I appreciate that, thank you so much. Ms. Hooper Walters, Anne Jorgensen wants to know, you know, or I'm sorry, Andrea O'Donnell wants to know how you will address affordable year-round housing?
Well, I think we've got a little bit of a vocabulary issue going on. Are we talking about affordable housing? Are we talking about essential housing? Are we talking about low-income housing? These are three completely different things. And let's be honest, this is a capitalistic marketplace. My primary living comes from renting homes, maximizing the profit of renting homes that would have once been considered long-term housing. So we have to just go ahead and accept the fact that land value is very, very expensive here. If we are looking for opportunities for housing complexes that are affordable, we're not talking about essential housing for people that are here for four months out of the year and have a job, you know, for four months, we're talking about affordable to people like you and I. You have to have transportation, it comes down to that. So while there are areas, other parts of the county that could hold affordable housing complexes, transportation is critical. It's a really tough one where we are, and I can't say that I individually have a plan. I would be very interested to see what the UNC plan has, but I do think we need to differentiate between essential housing for employees, affordable housing for everyone, and low-income housing as Bowser Town.
Okay, thank you. Kathy, what would you like to add?
Oh, yes, I would, I would actually like to add on what Amanda had said. You know, a couple things, you know, I did take the current survey that just came out about housing and employers, that basically was based towards seasonal, seasonal workforce, and that's good, we do need places to live for our seasonal workforce, but we need places to live for those of us that live here year-round that we can afford to live in. And, you know, we're talking at land, and we're looking, you know, at affordable housing. To me, these tracks that we're looking at are great if you want to have an apartment, but they sound like we're segregating people, and that's not something that I'm for either. Our housing, we should be able to live and work in our communities. Every single one of our communities should have some form of, you can say, affordable, essential workforce housing, whatever you want to call it, we should all be able to live and work together, and as Amanda said, you know, our housing is 40% higher than everywhere in the country. So, you know, we do have an issue, we have developed very quickly, we have not really thought about that, we are going to have more tourism, more year-round people, we're going to need places for our teachers and our police and our fire and our nurses to live. So we need to look at that, and as I said, I'm going to hearken back to what I said, an economic development office, we need, we need an essential place to coordinate that, because I've read these studies coming into this, and there are a number of things we can do. Community, I'll do them really quickly, community land trusts, accessible dwelling, community development corporations, low-income housing tax credits, we have to admit to ourselves there are people here that need that, and targeted zoning. So there are things that we can do and we can look at and pull that together, because we need our people to be able to live and work here and enjoy everything Dare County has to offer.
Great, thank you so much for that. Our next question comes from Anne Jorgensen. Would you consider offering tax benefits for landlords that offer long-term leases for local employees to alleviate the housing shortage? Why or why not? So I'm going to call on the next candidate, and then I'll read the question again, because I know it's a little long. Ms. Hooper Walters, you're going to take this one first. Would you consider offering tax benefits for landlords that offer long-term leases to local employees to alleviate the housing shortage? Why or why not?
Absolutely. Well, because this is capitalism, and people are going to do what is going to make them the most money, and tax incentives are a wonderful way to steer decisions to benefit the whole.
Okay, thank you. Ms. McCulloch Testa, what are your thoughts?
Yes, definitely, I think that we need to do that, I think that's something that I just said beforehand, and that comes in with, with community land trusts and helping to help people to live here. It's a pretty easy answer for me, yes.
Thank you. Mr. House, would you consider offering tax benefits for landlords that offer long-term leases for local employees?
Yeah, as I said before, when we were talking about the issue that just came up about essential housing, affordable housing, that's one of the things that we're looking at is tax credits. So we're already in that looking at it. Also, you've got to understand too, especially some of the houses here that rent seasonally through vacation, they can make 10 times the amount that they can as a year-round rental. So even if we offered them free property tax, it still would not be enough to offset it. But yeah, I would, like I said, we've already looked, started looking at tax credits for building of the essential housing and stuff like that, so we're already in the ballgame. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. And Mr. Woodard?
Yes, Colleen, absolutely, yes, I would certainly consider this, and as Commissioner House says, this is something on the table that we have, that we have under consideration.
Thank you so much. Our next question comes from Colleen Schreiber from Manio. How would you expand our economy beyond tourism? Do you believe the tourist economy pays low wages? And we'll start with Ms. McCulloch Testa.
Well, first off, we do, diversification in our economy is really important. We do need to preserve the economy that we have, our tourism industry as well as our commercial fishing industries, but we need to look at a way to further diversify. And yes, 40%, 40% of our people here work in a low-wage economy. That's something that was in the NC State study that was presented to the Board of Commissioners. So we know that our people here work in low-wage economies. They also work, you know, they go day-to-day, it's hourly, it's gig, I'm working three, you know, people are working three jobs, and they're doing that seasonally. So we know that people are worried about where their next paycheck is coming from. One of the things we need to look at is with the increase in property sales, you know, our housing market right now is basically through the roof, and there will be more people moving here and working here, possibly remotely. We need to look at how we're going to expand to handle that, which means more teachers, more EMTs, more fire, more police, some, our medical system, our services are going to need to expand, so we're going to be needing, bringing more people. But we also need to look at how we can diversify that based upon space that we have and the fact that, you know, if we need to do industry, that probably won't be, that would be on the mainland, that probably won't be on the beach. So that's where that long-term vision and being bold and looking forward into our future and bringing in a diverse number of stakeholders that may not have been at the table already, that need to be at the table. We can sit down and talk about that and decide, you know, what to do next, but we do definitely need to diversify this economy and make it easier for people to live and work here. That's, that's the main platform of my campaign.
Thank you so much. Ms. Hooper Walters, how would you expand our economy beyond tourism, and do you believe the tourism economy pays low wages?
Head out of the gate, yes, the tourism economy pays low wages. If you are working retail, you, or if you are waiting tables, it is literally week-to-week, if not day-to-day. So that's, we'll go ahead and stop with that one. I don't think that we are positioned to invite big business or outside business to come and diversify our economy for us. I think that's something that, once again, we're going to have to do from the ground up. Many, many years ago, I created the Outer Banks Local Foods Council with the desire to create a large-scale distribution of commercial fish, our commercial fish, across North Carolina, turning around and bringing back products we no longer produce in this region. And the goal there was to spur cottage industry, to spur the value-added asset of our commercial fishing, which makes the fish worth more, it offers more jobs, and it's something that we have right here, and it also allows us to eat slightly better food. So this is a big, hearted market that likes to know where its stuff is coming from, and I think that's something that we can do, but I just don't think that big business or large tax incentives from the state level is going to do it for us.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Woodard, how would you expand our economy beyond tourism, and do you believe that tourist economy pays low wages?
Yes, thank you, Colleen. You know, that's a, that's a tough one, that's very, very difficult, and it's certainly something that our Board has addressed numerous, numerous times. I can only say that we are what we are. We are a tourism-driven economy. It is essential that we protect our beaches with beach nourishment and grow, and make sure that our beaches and our economy is very, very strong to get our visitors in here. That we are what we are, we're a tourist-driven economy, and they come here for our pristine beaches, and we need to protect that, and that's why we've spent the amounts of money, the towns, as well as the county, as well as our occupancy tax, to take care of nourishing our beaches. Yes, absolutely, the tourism industry has low-paying jobs, but we have, we have worked with the Chamber of Commerce for a number of years now economically. We talk about, you know, it was mentioned earlier by one of the candidates, the Economic Development Officer. You know, we've worked with the Chamber of Commerce and our stakeholders concerning what we, what we could do to expand our economy, and unfortunately, it's, we don't have a whole lot of options there. We don't have infrastructure, we don't have lands to, or the facilities to be able to bring in large manufacturing or industrial or anything like that, but we are looking at that as, you know, constantly with the Chamber of Commerce to see what we can do to grow. It was mentioned that small business, you know, small business is certainly important to our economy here, and we hope that we can continue to see that grow. But we are what we are, we are a tourism-driven economy, and we've got to protect that, and we've got to keep our beaches nourished in order to keep that infrastructure and keep that being one of the top beaches in the entire nation, and for that most part, the world. So we're going to, we're going to top a billion dollars just this year, and we've lost 60 days in March and April, and we'll continue to top a billion-dollar industry. So we've got to do everything humanly possible we can to continue to protect our tourism industry.
Thank you, thank you, Bob. Mr. House, anything you'd like to add to that?
Yeah, a couple things. Looking, definitely, I do agree, a lot of our tourist industry does have lower wages, I understand that, and I totally agree with that. I myself, at one time, had to work four different jobs, or four jobs at one time for over a period of about three or four years just to live here, but that was okay with me because I liked living here. One of the other things is expanding our economy. We've looked at an economic development officer, it's in the plan, we were looking at possibly even diving into it a little bit, little bit deeper with this last budget, but unfortunately, COVID hit, it kind of cut a lot of things out that we were looking at. And also, instead of expanding, we've got to fix our housing situation before we can expand a whole lot more in our economy. That's, that's the cornerstone, and that's what we've been looking at. We've got to fix that before we can move forward. Several, several different companies have come to us, we've even had the same problems here in the county trying to hire people that we had openings for, but they couldn't find a house in their range. So that's the problem we've got right now, we've got to fix the housing before we can diversify a whole lot more of our economy. One of the things that I've been looking at is increasing our second-largest economic driver, which is our commercial fishing industry and sport fishing industry. A lot of what I've been looking at, leaning towards, is trying to get some of these rod-and-reel companies and some of the radar companies and some of the rants companies to come down and do research and development and open up a research and development office here. That would bring higher-paying wage jobs to Dare County and also enhance our commercial fishing industry as well.
Very good. Amanda, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, can I chime in real quick and just say that we are incredibly stringent on itinerant merchants, and so I find it hard for us to stand here and say, oh, we're doing everything we can. We're not. Itinerant merchants are something that is just a very simple way to open up some bottom-level small-business opportunities. And, you know, Steve, to allow a fish, a hook-and-line fish to be sold would be more productive economically than bringing the rod-and-reel company into the county.
I think this sounds like a topic that would be great for us to take offline and give you guys ample opportunity to kind of get into the details on the both sides, but I appreciate you saying that, thank you so much. Our next question comes from Jessica Moody, but it also was another question that we got several times. Jessica is interested in hearing your thoughts on protecting us from offshore drilling. And Ms. Hooper Walters, you've got that one first.
Okay, well, I think it's probably safe to say that all of us here are going to be on the same page when it comes to offshore drilling, if, we just can't take the risk. Risk versus reward, we cannot take it, whether you're talking about clean water, commercial fishing, or pristine beaches, just not for us.
Thank you. Mr. House?
It's already off the table. Donald Trump actually signed a order yesterday, putting a moratorium on offshore drilling and seismic testing on the coast of North Carolina until 2032. And I fought long and hard against it. And I fought long and hard against it, like, like all of us on the board have. I don't think anyone on the board has, has actually worked hard on it than Mr. Woodard has.
It, it is definitely a, a hot topic and has been for quite some time. Ms. McCullough Testa, you have anything you'd like to add to that?
Yes, I was kind of shaking my head there a little bit. Um, first off, yes, I am totally against offshore drilling, seismic testing. Um, and I'll say this, I have been endorsed by the Sierra Club, the Cypress Group of the N.C. Sierra Club, because of my viewpoint, as well as how I want to protect our coastline. Yes, the president signed a moratorium. A moratorium is an executive order, it is not a ban. That doesn't mean necessarily it's not, it won't come back on the table. And so we can't get complacent and we can't step back and say, just because somebody signed something on a piece of paper that was a resolution and made it in a moratorium, that that's not going to come back at us. So we do need to be very, very super hyper vigilant because without clean water, we don't have Dare County. So that's basically, you know, where I stand on this, that I will continue to fight and will continue to make sure that that topic, we don't forget that topic and it doesn't go away because it's very important to us here.
Mr. Woodard, what would you like to add?
Colleen, I don't think there's any surprise to you how I stand on this. I have been to Washington DC to meet with our senators. I have been to Washington DC to meet with our House Rep, Representative in the House. I have been to Raleigh. I sat in opposition's, uh, living room, Governor Cooper with Secretary Zanki, at the time of Department of Interior, explaining to him the situation in Dare County with respects to the devastation that it would cause if we were to have an oil spill off our coast. The risk is not worth the reward. And the federal government has failed to tell us what that reward would be. We don't need, uh, drilling off our coast. One oil spill would devastate, uh, Dare County, uh, and, and our livelihood. We've got more shale oil in the United States of America than any parts of the world, and we're not even fracking for it. So I, you know, I can go on and on and on, but it's pretty obvious throughout this entire Dare County community, uh, where I stand with respects to offshore drilling and seismic testing. Get complacent? Absolutely not. We'll not get complacent. I'm well aware it's an executive order and it's there for 2020, 32. But I will fight this, uh, as long as I sit at the Board of Commissioners seat in Dare County and be in opposition to offshore drilling off our coast. And I have not let up one bit, uh, with respects to that. I just had another, uh, conversation yesterday with Oceans, who is a huge, uh, uh, authority in opposition to offshore drilling. They very well know where I stand. As a matter of fact, I went to DC.
Bob, I'm, I'm sorry, Bob, you're out, you're out of time. Um, I know you're very passionate about this and you'll have lots of opportunities to share everything that you know. Let's see, question number six is a league question. What will you do to help the individuals and businesses that have suffered this year due to COVID-19? And we'll start with Mr. House.
A couple of things I've already done. I've, uh, actually contacted a, a lot of our, uh, our senators in, uh, Washington DC and also our House Representative in Washington DC, uh, about the COVID relief programs for our commercial fishermen. Some of those have already come, come in. Also work with our, uh, state, uh, legislators, uh, for them to have the, uh, to get the funds to our commercial fishermen. And it's already been, uh, been released to DEQ and the Division of Marine Fisheries is, is doing that, that, those out now. I, I can't say how much I care about the, the citizens in Dare County and I could do whatever I can to help them out, uh, especially under, under these type situations. I'm also a member of, uh, a couple of different nonprofit organizations that, that we're helping as much as we can as well. I, I can't tell you how much I, I can, I, I would love to help everybody. But unfortunately, I'm limited only in what, in what I can do personally, so, thank you.
You're welcome. It is, it is definitely a big issue. Kathy McCullough Testa, what will you do to help the individuals and businesses that have suffered this year due to COVID-19?
Well, you know, I've given that a lot of thought and very active in some things that, you know, where, where I work, uh, we, I was one of the first, actually, on the beach to apply the Friday night that the PPP loans were available. We applied for a PPP loan for two of, of the companies that I work with, and we did receive those. I mean, that did help our business and how, and it has helped a number of businesses here. It hasn't helped all of them, but it was a good start. You know, there was the EIDL that came out that has helped. There are a number, there's another small business loan that has come out, and I worked with our workforce development, uh, group to do that in the capacity that I'm in now. Also, you know, I served as Executive Director of the Beach Food Pantry and worked with social services. So I'm fully aware of all of the organizations that we have are out there. Now, of course, it takes money to fund those. So if we don't have a lot of money coming in or people aren't making money, they're not funding those as well. But one of the things that I see that we haven't done, and I know they've done, it's done, it's been done in Camden County, it's been done in Pasquotank County, Jerome County. There's been small, and the, um, Outer Banks Association Grille Tour has asked this question of us, as well as the, the home builders, about the small business cares loans, or one-time grants, I shouldn't say loans, one-time grants of whether Dare County should be doing that for our small businesses. Our small businesses are suffering. And, you know, when we talk about working with the Chamber of Commerce, not all of them can even afford to join the Chamber of Commerce. I mean, that's a membership organization. We have a lot of small businesses, a lot of people who work in a gig economy, a lot of artists here, a lot of people where we should get together and put together some sort of loan program and put that in place. And that should have been done. But that's something that we can actually do going forward to help our small businesses because they really, really are suffering.
Very good, thank you. Uh, Mr. Woodard, your thoughts?
Yes, as, as Commissioner House said, we've, uh, we've spoken to our state and federal folks, uh, that there's, there's, uh, money coming in. We've talked to our Finance Director, uh, David Clausen, as to ways that we can, uh, help, uh, uh, support our, uh, local businesses and, and help them with the, uh, COVID relief program. So we're in the, we're in the process of, uh, looking at that and seeing how we can establish, uh, some help for those folks.
Excellent, thank you. And Ms. Hooper Walters?
Well, I think that there's very little that county commissioners can do. This is not necessarily under the purview. We can encourage state leaders and we can encourage federal leaders, but the, we are limited to what we have the capacity to do. Uh, the grant programs and loan programs Kathy was talking about are, are wonderful, uh, as long as we're able to be very strict with who is actually able to get them and that they are going to the right places. I think that's the most important, that they're going to the right places. I had one other thing, but it just went away.
Oh, I hate my mouth.
I know, right? I'll go ahead and wrap it up there.
Okay, thank you so much. Our next question comes from Susan West. She asks, other than responding to regulatory measures proposed by the state or federal government, what proactive steps can the Dare County Board of Commissioners take to support our local commercial fishing industry? And we'll start with Ms. McCullough Testa.
Could you do a favor for me and repeat that question?
Yeah, I can, because I had to read it in my head first, too.
Okay, sorry about that.
Other than, or other than responding to regulatory measures proposed by the state or local government, what proactive steps can the Dare County Board of Commissioners take to support local commercial fishing industry?
Well, I think there, you know, we've discussed a few of those already, is Amanda had said in, I'm probably not going to say it in the exact same words, but, you know, to have, um, itinerant markets, those sorts of things for our commercial fishing, we need to, you know, bring in different types of industry. I, I, I agree with Steve on this one. You know, we do need to bring in some different types of industry where we are doing some R and D to help our commercial fishing, as well as to help with ecotourism, providing expansion, dredging, building the dredge is really important, keeping our inlets open and clean. And the other thing is clean water. It basically keeping our beaches clean and keeping our water clean. And that would help our commercial fishing industry. So those are some things that we really can do without dealing with, you know, that we do have all the regulatory that we need to work with. But there are a lot of things that we need to do and just making sure we're sitting down and we do have everything in place to do that, but to expand that a little bit more. And I think that that's something that, it's part of our heritage and it needs to be part of our president and needs to be part of our future. So we do definitely need to focus on it so that we make sure that we can keep it expanded and grow it. Because I like eating my local seafood. That's, there, there were some seafood that I didn't eat before I moved here because of the fact I didn't get fresh local seafood. So we want to keep that here and we also want to make, able to make sure that, you know, our children and our grandchildren are able to, you know, take advantage of that as well.
Excellent, thank you so much. Mr. Woodard, what more can you do?
Absolutely. You know, I, I have to give, uh, you know, Commissioner House is our fishing guy, it's for a better, for lack of a better term on our board. Steve has been very, very active, uh, with following our fishing industry and our board has been very, very supportive of our fishermen. We have, we have taken a huge, huge step in, in, with respects to developing a public and private partnership to build a $15 million dredge to keep our inlets open. This will be built, Commissioner Tobin reported to us just at our meeting, uh, this week, that, um, uh, this, this progress of this building has, is, is underway. And we should have this in the next 18 months, go to sea trials and then, uh, uh, be approved so that we can keep our inlets open. We have got to get this done so that we can get our commercial trawlers in and out of our, um, inlets so that we can continue. At one time, years ago, we had 15, uh, houses, uh, processing houses in Manio. And I can tell you right now, we're nowhere near that. And we've got to bring this fishing industry back. We're hopeful that once this occurs, that we can get our trawlers back in here. We can get those, uh, uh, those, uh, catch numbers that are going to our neighbors in Virginia back so that we can get this back and get our trawlers in and out of here so we can grow this industry. We have opposed all kinds of legislature. Steve just brought to us about the flounder, uh, the limit, limited weeks, limited weeks of flounder, uh, and we've already lost five days due to weather. So we're, we're lobbying them so that we can get those additional five days back. So, so that our fishermen, uh, can, can, uh, fish the, the, the limited time that they have. So we're doing a number of things and we're lobbying, uh, the state and, and the, uh, the, the, uh, group that monitors this on a regular basis.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, Ms. Hooper Walters?
Open air markets and quasi-public-private processes. We keep fighting the regulation all we want, but that's really what it comes down to, the ability to sell your own fish.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. House? The Fishman?
Can you see my gills? Uh, I, I can tell you, I, I, like I said, I reinstated the, uh, Dare County Commissioner for Working Watermen. And, uh, one of the goals on that, uh, committee is not only look after the reg, uh, the legislative and, and, uh, regulations in, in that industry, but also ways that we can help promote the industry, especially here in Dare County. Uh, one of the things that actually just came out, uh, alwaysncfresh.com, uh, is actually geared towards our, uh, commercial fishermen, not only here in Dare County, but up and down across the state. Excellent, excellent way. One of the things that I, we plan on doing is doing more of the, uh, promoting what, what that, what, what is the, the heritage of, of our watermen? And showing that aspect of it and educating the public where your seafood comes from and, and the way it's processed and, and more, more of that, that educational thing. And that's one of the things that I've been, been really guided on when I go to talk to, uh, any of our legislators up in Raleigh or in DC. I harp on that of the, the heritage of it and where it comes from and, and the good people that support it. That in itself has, uh, increased tremendously. And one of the, one of the big things that I tell them, uh, all the legislators I've talked to, is I'm not a commercial fisherman, but I know what's right and what's wrong. And a lot of the legislative, uh, things that come down the pipe and a lot of, a lot of the regulations are wrong. And we're working hard to get those, get those fixed. And also looking at different ways that we can expand our commercial fishing industry. You got, yeah, I mean, you got to look at, you, 15, 20 years ago, we had 30,000 commercial fishermen in North Carolina licenses, if, you know. Uh, current day, we've got 3,500. It's getting harder and harder for God to make it, uh, in commercial fishing. So we're trying to do whatever we can to help them keep that tradition heritage alive.
Terrific, thank you so much. I know that that, that's an important topic for everyone who lives and plays on the Outer Banks. I appreciate all of your thoughts there. Uh, our next question is from M.S. Shrek. And, uh, this question is, how will you protect and defend the rights of Dare County stakeholders who are not year-round residents? Mr. Woodard, we'll start with you.
Well, we've, um, as you very well know, uh, when COVID broke out in March, we, we took, we, the, uh, no longer the control group, I don't like using that word, that our stakeholders, our mayors, ours park superintendent, we, um, we took proactive action with respects to COVID because we, we had no idea how bad this was going to be. And, and we took the steps, it, I didn't make this decision on my own. We, uh, we made it as a group and we were unanimous that, uh, we were gonna, um, eliminate our visitors and our non-resident property owners from coming into Dare County. And, and it worked. It, it paid off for us. We know that's a difficult, uh, decision that had to be made, um, for our non-resident property owners. And we have, um, we have since, uh, changed that. We now, uh, a- as a result of, uh, litigation, we have chosen to, uh, treat non-resident property owners the same as we treat, uh, residents and moving forward. This, as I said earlier, this was a, a difficult decision, but it had to be made and it was the right decision and it worked for us. And you learn, you learn by your mistakes. And, and I'd be the first to admit that. So we have, uh, we've taken a, um, a different step towards this and we've made the pledge that, uh, we will, we will treat non-resident property owners the same as we will treat our residents. And they can, they can, uh, if, if we evacuate, they'll be treated the same way as our residents will be, will be treated. So, um, uh, we, we certainly, uh, we certainly understand. And, and I'll be honest with you, we have 25,000 non-resident property owners. And, and as far as the negatives that we heard over this decision, we only heard from a couple of hundred. So you do the math. You're in that business, Colleen, that's a small percentage. So, um,
We get to hear all the good, bad, and the ugly.
Absolutely. So, so
We appreciate your thoughts there, Bob, thank you.
It was, it was very, very minimal, uh, who had issues with, with the steps that we took.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Hooper Walters, the question is, how will you protect and defend the rights of Dare County stakeholders who are not year-round residents?
Bob, I don't think you made a mistake. I think you guys did the right thing and I think it would have been an incredibly difficult decision to make. And the only thing I could say is I might have been a little bit quicker to the draw. So I thank you guys for what you did. You know, when it comes to our responsibility to take care of our residents or our non-resident property owners, our responsibility is their public safety. And if it is not within their safety, And if it is not within their safety to be here, be it a storm or be it a pandemic, it is our responsibility to say, no, you can't come. Every once in a while, we have to be the bad parent.
The bad parent. We're the ones looking out for everyone, right? Mr. House, how do you keep all these folks in line represented?
Just like Chairman Woodard said, we're going to treat them just like we, we do our, our, our residents here. They have a right to it. We, we, we had to take steps because we didn't quite know what was going on. The numbers we were getting were astronomical. And good thing they didn't come to fruition and, and a good thing that they were over-exaggerated. But we didn't know that at the time. I deal with a lot of property owners that don't live here in vacation homes throughout my business. And several of them called me about it. And once I explained the situation to them, they were fine with the decision that was made. But as far as protecting their non-resident property owners' rights, they have a right to their property. The only time that I would, I would do anything to limit access to their property, and same thing for a resident here as well, is due to safety issues and safety concerns. I spent 35 years in emergency services. I know what can happen when, and when it's not safe. And that is my first and foremost decision-making process in any, any type of situation like that, is, is it safe? If it's safe, then fine. If not, we need to look in another way until we can get it safe.
Thank you. Ms. McCullough Testa, anything you want to add to that?
Yes. First off, communication. I think that's the biggest thing that we were lacking at the beginning of all of this. One of the things, everything was happening and it was coming at us very, very, very quickly. And from the communication perspective, the county has a joint information committee. I, when I worked at the Town of Duck, I was instrumental and I was on that committee with Dorothy Hester and the other public information officers to develop that committee. So there was already a mechanism in place to start to communicate with our stakeholders as things were happening, as this pandemic was unfolding. We knew how to do it. We had it in place. And we've done it in the past. So I did, I mean, I remember sending an email to Bob saying, hey, you know, we probably should do a little bit more communication. And I even volunteered to help. So to get that going. The other thing is, yes, we did need to shut down. And our, that is what we do. We were, we were actually protecting ourselves. It was a public safety issue. And we weren't the only ones shutting down. When we shut down, people weren't, were told not to travel. So there was a travel ban pretty much everywhere. And so we were doing, we weren't the only ones to do thing, that do that. We were lucky because, you know, we have bridges. We can kind of shut those down a little quicker and a little easier. So those are some things that, yes, we did. Now, our stakeholders that are non-resident property owners, I was one of them. I understand where they're coming from. There's a group that's formed. I don't know if anyone's talked to them yet, but I have. And they do have legitimate concerns. They do have, you know, they own property here. They rent or they come here as a second home. So there are things that we need to work with. So we need to make sure that they do have a seat at the table. And when we do these sorts of things, we just go right back to that whole issue of communication. If we communicate and we work together and we explain what we're doing and why we're doing it, and everybody has buy-in, it works. And as Bob said, you know, maybe 100 people were really upset about it and everybody else understood it after you explained it. And, you know, that's, that's basically what I bring to the table because I have a crisis communication and communications degree and a communications background.
Thank you so much. We've got one final question. This one comes from Monica Tibido. She's asking, tell us about your vision on supporting the schools during the pandemic, both financially and logistically. We'll start with Mr. House.
We just had a budget amendment done this past, last night on the schools for a screening process system. The school board, we've, we've let them know that, what, what do you need? And we'll be willing to work with them. But that's a school board decision of how they want to open the schools and run the schools. We'll be more than happy to meet whatever they, they need. It's just that we haven't heard exactly what they need yet. They're not even going to have a meeting until, I think it's October 1st, about discussing if they're even going to open the schools. So, you know, until then, it's kind of hard to answer that question till we find out what's going on from the school board. So, but we're here. We've always, anytime the school board has asked us to, to help out, we've, we've done it. I don't see any, that this would be any different. So.
Thank you. Mr. Woodard?
Absolutely, Colleen. We, we, our, our Board of Commissioners has a phenomenal relationship with the Board of Ed. I mentioned this earlier in, in our statement and earlier in the candidate's forum, that we have a 5-on-5 committee, which is made up of myself, Chairman of Dare County Board of Commissioners, Chairman of the BOE, our county manager, their superintendent, our finance director, their finance director, and two representatives from their board and two representatives from our board. We have stepped up to the plate numerous times for our schools. It's, it's critical. We've, we've, we've funded $23 million of their 50-some, 50, almost 58, $59 million budget. I'm in constant contact with their chair and their board. We will be holding a 5-on-5 meeting in the next couple of weeks to address just what this question from Monica has asked us about funding. We've, we've stepped up to the plate with respects to funding and all issues, even, even with respects to teachers' pay. So, so we've been there and, and, and we're doing the maintenance on our facilities as well. We want our kids back in school. I want to see our kids back in school. The school, the superintendent has a fantastic plan that he can put in place. Half the school Monday, Monday, Wednesday, the other half the school Tuesday, Thursday, working day Fridays. They've taken all the steps that they can to social distance. So we need to get our kids back in school. And, and we'll be working with them and we'll do whatever the BOE, the Board of Education wants to do. But that's their call. But we'll, we'll be there to assist in any way humanly possible as, as whatever decision they do make. We know that there's a, there's some split on their board with respects to going back. But hopefully they can work through this and we're there to support them any way we can.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Ms. McCullough Testa, anything you'd like to add about, you know, helping to support the schools during the pandemic, either financially or logistically?
Yes. I mean, this, this, I'm very passionate about public schools. And when I'm elected, Bob, I would really like to be on that committee. Just to build a bit of my background, my mom and dad are both public school, retired public school teachers. My mom kindergarten, first grade, and my dad math, science, medical, middle school teacher and retired as an assistant superintendent. And he was lucky, he would not have been able to get that education to become, have a doctorate in education without serving in the Korean conflict and having the GI Bill to do that. So I'm very, very lucky that I grew up as the daughter of two public school teachers. So, you know, I've talked to several of our administration and several of our teachers, you know, about the challenges they're facing, as well as parents, the challenges they're facing and helping to educate their students at home. So, you know, to Monica's question about funding, there, you know, there is funding in place, but the staffing issues are going to be very, very challenging when, especially based upon social distancing and having kids in school and buses, and how many, how many students can be on a bus, and whether there are going to be additional bus runs, which will cost money. So those are things, when I talk to, you know, those administrators, actually, I talked to them today, that, you know, whether we're going to do a traditional, blended, online, you know, there'll probably be still some form of online available, you know, going forward. I mean, that's probably something that we're going to see that's not going to go away ever. So those are some things that we're going to look at because the schools have challenges and there's a lot going on. And the teachers and our administrators and our parents are working really, really hard every day to make sure that our children are educated. And so that is something I'm super, super passionate about. And I know we're going to have to be a little bit more creative in how we deliver those services and possibly our funding. So, you know, hopefully the school board will come back, you know, and ask those, those, for those, that monies and we'll be able to support that as a commission.
Very good. Thank you so much. Ms. Hooper Walters, you got the last word on this one?
Well, I have a seventh grader at First Light Middle and a ninth grader at First Light High. And I will say that the teachers are doing a fantastic job. I realize that this is really, really difficult. I will say that I did homeschool for a couple of years. So we might have had a little bit of an edge up on how to handle your personal workload and to not be, not kind of have that oversight that the kids have in the classroom. But I think most importantly, it's listening to the teachers. The Board of Ed, I, I wouldn't want to bypass the Board of Ed, but we rarely sit down and hear what the teachers say that they need. And, and I think that's really, they're the ones that have, they're, they're like the first line of defense with what's happening in the homes. And so as far as I can tell thus far, we've done a really good job about getting hotspots to those that did not have internet. We've done a really good job about getting Chromebooks dispersed. But we really just need to focus on what do the individual teachers need? And many of us aren't in a rush to go back. Do you think that this is a great opportunity for us to explore some alternate classrooms? We have a lot of amazing outdoor spaces that we have never thought about utilizing for educational purposes. And while the weather this last week hasn't necessarily been conducive, we typically have very good weather for that. And, you know, our buildings are reaching capacity as is. So you're reaching out and using this pandemic time to explore what can happen in our outdoor spaces, I think is a prudent choice.
Very good. Thank you so much. That's the good news. This concludes the question and answer segment. Everybody take a breath, breathe in, breathe out. We're going to go ahead and transition into hearing our candidates' closing remarks. Again, they are going to be heard in reverse order from their opening statements. So we'll begin with Mr. Woodard.
Thank you again, Colleen. I, I just want to thank everyone of you personally for taking time out of your busy schedule to attend this candidate's forum this evening. Please know that I certainly welcome your comments. Let me just put this number out there. I can be reached at 252-702-7219. And I, and I'd really like to hear from you with any of your concerns. On November 3rd, Dare County, you'll have an opportunity to make choice about who you'd like to hold the District 2 commissionercy. And I certainly hope you will exercise your right to vote. I hope you will find that my desire to serve the county of Dare is certainly properly explained here. If not, you can certainly go to my website at electwoodard.com. And I ask for your vote. Rather than you cast your vote for me or my opponent, please exercise your right to vote. I'm out and about quite a bit throughout the county. And I certainly look forward to seeing each and every one of you, speaking with you, and also hopefully looking forward to seeing you at the polls on Election Day.
Thank you so much, Bob.
I encourage you to, to look at my site. And I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. House, final words?
Thank you. Like I said before, I, I have been a strong advocate for our working watermen and keeping our waterways open. You know, we've mentioned the, the new dredges being built. I'm on that committee as well with Mr. Tobin. And I've done a lot of work on that to assure that we have our waterways open. Please vote. It's more important than anything else that you can do as a US patriot other than serving in our military. Vote. Without your vote, your voice is not heard. So make your voice heard and vote. You can reach me at steve.house@darenc.com or 252-216-8985, or reelectstevehouse.com. Please, please. Today is also National Registered Vote Day. So hopefully keep that in your mind. If you didn't do it today, make sure you register tomorrow or the next day. Get it done. Let's hear your voice. Let's be heard. Let's protect our waterways and our watermen and move Dare County forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I love that, that enthusiasm. Mr. Couch, closing comments?
Absolutely. Thank you, Colleen. Y'all did a great job. It's really encouraging to see the passion that these candidates have for our area. I want this to be on your radar screen, everyone. I'm speaking to the panel and I'm also speaking to the participants. COVID-19 has had an impact on our ability to provide childcare and early childhood education in Dare County. And it's not going to go away. We're going to need to be mindful of that going forward. In a county of about 36,500 people, we've got a significant amount of children, about 1,800 that are from birth to five. And a lot of families are hurting here. So I, I think it is incumbent on local government to do what we can to help provide child, childcare. This is critical age groups for these guys. They, they need to know their colors. They need to be able to tie their shoes. They need to be able to spell their name by the time they get into kindergarten. All right. My last words, y'all. I appreciate everything that Dare County has done for us. But please remember that 35 cents out of every dollar that comes into this county comes out of the Cape Adders National Seashore. Yes, there's a world south of Wellbone Junction. If you don't think so, come down here and see how many people are socially distancing, distancing on our beaches. And I love y'all. I appreciate you. And once again, really good forum. This is an hour and a half of really good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. We appreciate your attending and sharing your love of the Outer Banks with us. We'll hear a closing statement from Ms. Hooper Walters.
Danny, I want to just chime in on something you said. I firmly believe that what happens between the ages of two and five is more critical than what happens between grades two and five. So early childhood education is something we need to, to be extra careful of. Right now, we just want to talk about balance, adaptability, and innovation. These are the things that are going to help propel us into the future. It's been a while since we've had a female voice on the commission. And when it comes to making decisions for the county, we need diversity. We need different perspectives and different life experiences coming together to make better decisions for the whole. Now's the time to look for people who seek innovative solutions. Now's the time to elect people with a sense of responsibility for the health and well-being of every individual in our community. And now it's time to elect people who can help bring the community together. And I would be honored to serve as one of those.
Thank you so much, Amanda. Mr. Overman?
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and the North Carolina Coastal Federation for having the forum tonight. It has been enlightening. Again, it has been my honor to serve Dare County. And again, I look forward to any challenges and opportunity that the future holds for our county. To everyone, be sure to vote. And I would appreciate your vote in the coming election. I look forward to serving you. Thank you so much.
Wow, that was perfectly timed, Chine. Last but certainly not least, let's hear from Ms. McCullough Testa.
Hi, everyone. Again, I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the North Carolina Coastal Federation for hosting tonight's forum and everyone else who joined and, and watched us tonight on this, on this online Zoom virtual meeting that we're having here. I am very grateful for the opportunity to participate and share my vision for Dare County, as well as to talk a little bit about me, my experience, and my viewpoints this evening. I hope everyone has gotten to know me just a little bit better. If elected as your next Dare County Commissioner, I promise to fight, preserve, protect, and enhance our beautiful home. I want to provide an opportunity and a voice for everyone that lives, works, and visits us here in Dare County. And I want to rise to the challenges of planning for our future because I know that we have them and we've seen them and they're, they're, they're ahead of us. I also will bring, as Amanda said, I will bring much needed diversity. It has, we don't have a female on the commission. That's not why I'm running, but we do need to have diverse voices at the table. And I will bring experience that's diverse to our county commission. So let me go really, really quickly, really, real quickly. I appreciate your vote. I appreciate your support. I'm online, Kathy for Dare County, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, website, and TikTok. So have a great evening, everyone. And remember to vote for me, Kathy McCullough Testa, as your next Dare County Commissioner.
Thank you, Kathy. TikTok, wow.
I'm on TikTok. I have fun with that.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. This concludes the Dare County Board of Commissioners Candidate Forum this evening. We wish to thank the candidates for their We wish to thank the candidates for their participation and the voters for their attendance and for their submitted questions. We want to thank our technical team, Craig and Michael, again, for managing the webinar. Went pretty flawlessly, I have to say. The video of this forum will be posted on our website, lvwdear.org, and on our YouTube page. Dare County and current TV channel broadcast dates, end times, and informations will be posted on our website. So if you missed a portion of this forum or you want to watch it again from the beginning or share it with a friend, that's, that's the way that you'll be able to do it. All candidates this evening have participated in the League's Online Voter Guide, vote411.org. We encourage you to look at this one-stop-shop website. You simply enter your address and you get to view the candidate information, their philosophy statements, social media links, submitted responses that they've positioned themselves with, you know, their own words. And it's a really great resource, so we encourage you to check it out. I will now return the program over to our coordinator, Lorelei DiBernardo. Thank you, ma'am.
Y'all did great. Thank you so much. It was really a great, informative program. I have a couple of voting reminders. Last day to register to vote by submitting a registration form is Friday, October 9th at 5:00 PM. And you may also register to vote if you have a North Carolina driver's license or a North Carolina ID. You can do that online. You can also register to vote at our early voting sites. And that brings me to early voting. It's from October 15th to the 31st in three locations, in Manio, in KDH, and Buxton. Those locations are on your screen. Very extensive voting hours for the early voting sites, so that's great. Monday through Friday, almost all day, and all Saturdays during that period have voting hours. If you wish to vote by mail, you will have, there's still time to do that. There is a new online request portal that you may use to request an absentee request form emailed to you. And that link is showing on the top of your screen. Or you can call the Dare County Board of Elections and ask for an application to vote by mail. Be sent to you. Their phone number is right in the middle of your screen. Election Day, of course, is on Tuesday, November 3rd. If you plan to vote on Election Day, your polling place may be changed this year due to COVID-19 requirements. So make sure you check before you go. And all these details and many, many more are available at the Board of Elections website. So go there and visit if you have any questions. We encourage everyone here, the candidates, participation, the audience, to join us as we strive to make democracy work. I thank everyone again for participating this evening. Y'all did great. Thank you. Thank you, Colleen. Thank you.
My pleasure.
And good night.
Good night, everybody.